And you spoke of beautification as far as this project. Now with this neighborhood be gated, I remember the last uh company that came before us with a project like this, they talked about having theirs gated.
Um, I think it's a possibility that we could do that. We have it set, uh and maybe I can let uh my architect uh talk about that, but it's it's got, you know, two exits for security. So you don't have a lot of access points like the other, you know, uh the other part.
Yeah, I mean, the current drawing does not show entry exit gates, but if that's something that is desired, and I'm sure we could work something out.
I'd definitely be, that would be something that couldn't possibly make that project look nicer than just like a trailer park. You know, manufactured home, it'll give it a different approach, a different look, a better look.
Wha- what's the difference, the actual difference between a trailer home?
It's the, how we, Urban Development Code, um. There's a development code.
Yeah, yeah, I couldn't give you one in detail, but it's a quality construction uh issue.
So rather than.
It's a higher standard.
So rather than uh.
It looks more like a home.
And I'm kinda, kinda guessing at this, so rather than an aluminum bolt and screw, you would use a stainless steel.
Uh, possibly.
And it has more of a home look.
Yeah, I think it's more about the physical, about its uh its ability to last, its its quality.
It's a question between the manufactured home and rural homes.
Correct.
It's it's a higher standard, so and I can set the, I think it's seventy six.
Seventy six.
And they, and when they took over and they set the standards for how manufactured homes, what they call rural homes. How a manufactured home should have, let's stand on it, to show those standards that they're, whatever that structure is, and those, met those standards. And so, that's the difference between manufactured homes and rural homes.
Doing this since it still looks like a trailer home.
But then there's development standards on that that.
Yes.
Require your, you know, stop and go to the reactors, and the machine that goes down from the.
Skirting.
Yeah, skirting to come down and all that stuff.
They they have one similar over, close to Horizon, up uh West Road, I believe. And I see it every day, it's gated, and those homes look like homes. And they're, and they're filling up uh Horizon, the company.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And it's filling up monthly.
It it does the new one?
Yes.
That one's uh almost thirty eight.
Yes, and it's filling up.
And it's a long, I've heard that obviously it's it's seven and a half miles from my tent.
Yes.
And it's not competing for a lot of people right now, so.
It's fu- it's it's further than that, sir. You you was being modest. Are we still in discussion? Any other questions?
I have no problem adding the gate field there.
It it looks real, it it sets the the tone, when you have that gate with, you know, children out there playing, you have to have a code to come in, so it sets the the precedence.
I think it's good. Just Mayor Council, before you take any actions, to make sure that we're, this is, this all that we're doing is, it's a preliminary, you know, decision to, for the initial site plan. Not, you're not approving the permit, not approving people's permits, just the general.
Site plan.
Go for the project. And then if, if you get approval from that, then it goes through the planning process, and that's where all the details will, you know, be found out. And then, if any appearances were left, let's come through, and then find a permit package will come before you.
Really? Uh, let me find it. I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed site plan for the manufactured home park to be located at forty nine twenty two Gresham Road, Brookshire, Texas, seven seven four two three. Second, it's gonna be forty eight. Forty eight, oh, forty eight twenty two Gresham Road, Brookshire, Texas, seven seven four two three.
Mr. Green, you want?
Against.
Ms. Taylor?
Against.
We have two and two.
Question, would you prefer an RV park?
No, sir.
I I prefer some homes.
Yeah.
I prefer homes, affordable homes. RV park gonna have a selected group, everybody can't afford a RV, but homes, affordable homes for this community is what some people need.
Well.
You break the tie. Right now, we're just approving the the.
Preliminary.
The preliminaries.
Okay, since we have two uh four and two against, I am going to say. Four, only for the uh side.
Side plans.
Only for now, and we'll have to come back again and do this again. Okay?
Appreciate you for your presence.
Okay, let's move on to agenda item number eight. Public hearing regarding amended chapters twenty four, thirty six, forty two, forty four, forty six, and fifty. Of the City of Brookshire Code of Ordinance regarding proposed amendments intended to provide update requirements for setbacks, building height, landscaping, drainage. Turf fair design, and other related development standards to applicable development related chapters of the City of Brookshire Code of Ordinance. Are we going to open?
Open at the time?
Seven o'clock, seven.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, during the public hearing time, I'll just take this moment to make public record that the, um, once again, the public hearing information was not distributed to the community. Also, just wanted to make public record that the agenda posted online on a screenshot right here, it's not the same agenda, this is the one that we're looking at right now. Um, the agenda online has eight uh pieces of information on here, in my, some of the, you can know. Uh, also, the owner of Global Pest Control was not notified of this agenda item.
He was? Okay.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, that's it?
Mr. Walthall, owner of Global Pest Control, still has not been notified that the fact that he's on our agenda, so that he can get present.
He's here?
Oh, there he is. That's because we told him.
Thank you.
He was notified, I called him, he told him.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Correction.
Okay. Question, where are we on this? Number eight?
The public hearing's still open, so any comments?
Any comments? Questions? More?
Mayor, for you, just if there's no comments.
I was. I could bring you that, it is. Seven oh three. Agenda item number nine. Huh?
Uh, quick question, just the notices, she's talking about they want to notify, they're the notices that were um under notices on the city website, right? Is that what she was saying, about before the hearing?
We posted, I I'm not sure, there was, I know there was notice posted on, at City Hall.
Agenda item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number twenty two dash six nine five dash fifteen. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brookshire, amending chapter twenty four of the Brookshire, City of Brookshire City Code of Ordinance, manufactured housing. Um, to fi- to provide updated requirements and setbacks, building heights, landscaping, drainage, turf, fair designs, and other related development standards. Do them one at a time, or?
Mayor, uh Mayor Council, if you don't mind, I would like to uh table this agenda item for the engineers to be here, cause I have some questions.
She met with us twice about this. The presentation, but we we.
Yeah, I remember the presentation. Y'all can move forward if you want.
Second it, so.
Make a motion that we table this item.
Second.
It's gonna be all of them.
All of them, all of them, let me, you want me to read all of them off?
No, no, no. Thank you so much.
Okay. Um, then we'll move on to agenda item number ten.
Mayor, Mr. Johnson, did you take the vote on that?
Mm-mm. No. I didn't think we can. Um, let me just, Jones and Taylor, this is stamps four. Miss Tigger.
Four.
Okay.
Here's the, kind of the items, I talked to Lisa Long today, and again, I had another city council meeting, but they, she was fine with, if if there was any, you know, action taken to table it. If if you feel more comfortable doing this like in a special workshop, or only focus on these items, then she's, their, her team was comfortable with that. So if that's something that the council's interested in doing, instead of having it as more of a chunk of agenda, a lot of the items we can do it, especially you getting a focus on that. You know, public hearing, go to specific items and all that kind of stuff. And then, then it, you think it'd be better.
They give transparency this way. We supposed to have three anyway, we only had two. Presentation said the workshop would be great. Oh, yeah.
The reason, reason why, there's a lot to take in in this, there's a whole lot. And the last thing we we want is for some development not able to actually come to the community, because we didn't really go through this. And uh, you know, we we we, I I understand the, I I remember the presentation, but this is the first time. And this is the first time too, so I think we need to be very thorough with it.
Okay. Um, agenda item number ten, discussion and possible action regarding global pest control services, Mr. Walthall.
Good evening.
Evening.
So, I'm Chris Walthall, I'm your mosquito control contractor. Been doing it with the city for, this will be the fifth year. I started in twenty sixteen, and it's been my pleasure to serve this community with mosquito control. As far as my mosquito control business, the season for the city has always started the first part of April, and ends. Last week of October, just before Halloween, I try to do the city on the thirtieth, the day before we go, I'll go trick or treating, so that we don't have mosquitoes. With the abundance of water that y'all see in the city now, and our city holds a lot of water. We we need to start larviciding, larviciding is where you larvicide for the little larvae that's in the, in the water and all the standing ditches. Need to start pretty quick, larvicide lasts about sixty days, so as historical data, I usually do the city five times in, in uh a sixty day time. In in a year for larviciding. And then, we'll start out fogging, which is called adult aciding, killing the adults mosquitoes, and we do that twice a week. We we uh adult aside on Tuesday night and Thursday night. As mosquitoes get worse throughout the year, about uh first part of June, we start three times. We'll we'll do Tuesday night, Thursday night, and Saturday night. I always start fogging just right at sunset, about thirty minutes after sunset, with the winning. Wind and temperatures do do depend a lot on uh how how accurate the the fog service will be. If I'm not able to fog on Tuesday night because it's raining or it's too winds windy, then I will do the service the next night. Try to keep everything in concession, because I don't only service the city of Brookshire, but I do Cinco Ranch, Jordan Ranch, and Willow Creek as well. And so, I have to divide those services up for the communities around. I want to extend my thanks to council and the mayor for all the help that y'all give me throughout the year, and citizens throughout the city. Because I get asked a lot of questions about mosquitoes. I can tell you, I have more people in favor of me fogging than against me fogging. Um, I get lots of hand, uh thumbs ups, lots of waves, and I know that I'm doing the job, job that needs to be done to control mosquitoes. You won't find anybody else more dedicated to controlling mosquitoes than me. Because I use the proper equipment, I use equipment that I can go off-road with, and in this town, we have to go off-road to treat for mosquitoes. Fourth Street, second and a half, First Street, those areas all hold a lot of water, and I have to get into those culvert areas. Uh, behind the the water depart, the Brookshire Katie Drainage Water Department, and that big field, it's the field that Mr. Green's church owns. Uh, that that large area there, you know what I'm talking about, Mr. Green? That holds water, holds a lot of water throughout the year. So folks that are over in that area, they get inundated with mosquitoes, not to mention. Fog in the city of Brookshire is a little bit different than fog in Cinco Ranch, and the reason that that is, is we have so much shrubbery, trees, overgrown lots. Those are moske- where the mosquitoes are mostly hiding, in in areas with standing water. You go into Cinco Ranch, they got restrictions, where people got motheryards, they gotta keep all that foliage down. So, it's a little bit more of a task to fog the city of Brookshire. Takes three and a half hours to fog this city, it's thirty five miles from start to finish, every time I fog it. I travel ten miles an hour, and I go into areas that I call hotspot areas, uh over and above just every street in this city. Sometimes I'll, I'll just do hotspot areas three and a half hours, and I can find them, they're all over the city, the Eleventh Street, Twelve Street, the city park. Uh, Garvey Road is a good example, Stella Road is another really good example, with a lot of standing water in those areas. So sometimes, I'll do whenever it's further on in the, in the year, when mosquito pressure's a whole lot more. I'll do two nights where I fog all the city streets, and then one night of that week where I get, get off in the ditches. And and uh get down where the mosquitoes are really at in these retention areas, these water retention areas. A a good example is Lakeside has a park area back behind it, that that holds, there's a bowl out there, and it holds a whole lot of water, where that little park is out there. I'd also like to extend a hand and a welcome to anybody that wants to go along with me in the Kubota fogger. Any, any, any city, city council member, or the city manager, if they wanna go along with me to see what it is that I do, I welcome that. Cause I want you to see what you're paying for and what you're getting. I can tell you that mosquitoes are gonna be coming soon. Once we get into nights where it's sixty five degrees and up, with all the standing water, it won't, won't be much longer, they're percolating right now. That's what's happening in all the standing water right now, mosquito larvae, they'll percolate. Do y'all have any questions about that?
Sure.
Can we start fogging the first week of April?
You can go today if you want.
So, I'd like to start larviciding right away.
You have a motion?
And then, be ready to start fogging like we've always done on the contract.
Okay.
Are we good with that?
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion that we uh approve uh Global Pest Control Service to start fogging, he requested the first week in April.
Second.
He said larvicide first.
Yes, sir. First week of April?
Yeah, instead of fogging. Cause you did.
Start the work. Start the first week, whatever it is, start it. Get, get, first week in April, terminology, get, get the uh larv in there to come on and stuff.
Miss Green, you can vote. Four. And Miss Taylor.
Four.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item number twelve.
Eleven.
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 Yes, eleven. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution number thirteen forty nine, adapting, uh, what is that word?
Procurement policy.
Say that.
Procurement policy.
I forgot that word. Procedure for grants, funds awarded under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Mayor Council, this is, plus by grant or rescue, here you're part of the fund administrator, in order to get those funds, you have to have a federal community policy in place. So this is the standard one that that is issued to, you know, every entity that receives these type of funds. You might have the city, municipal, in a policy in place, you don't need that for the federal funds, something like that.
I'll make a mo- you you ready? Discussion?
Question? Been a long time looking.
Hey, Mr. Jones.
Make a motion that we approve resolution thirteen forty nine.
Second.
That was green?
Green. This is stamps, four. And Miss Taylor.
Four.
Motion carries. Now we'll move on to agenda item number twelve. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution thirteen, or let's say one three five zero. Authorizes the mayor to execute all appropriate documents related to the state.
Opioid?
Statement with N D O N T V eight.
So, back in, I can't remember when, but a few months ago, you approved the Johnson and Johnson settlement, that was a major, a few, uh, settlement. But since then, these have been, uh, uh, so, Turtle Dinosaur suggested all send it to the internet for Johnson and Johnson, because they, these two entities. The prior, prior grant from approval, it's called Texas Term Sheet, that's what Johnson and Johnson are running to, these two companies are breathing that same term sheet, which we have, then, we as well get the funds that we've distributed under that settlement as well. So this is just to tag on, two other entities for Johnson and Johnson.
Ready for discussion?
For the mayor? Yes, sir.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we approve resolution one three five zero.
Second. Mr. Green?
Four.
And Miss Taylor?
Four.
Motion carries. Agenda item number thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding solar lighting for the city, Mr. Jones?
Brother Mayor, Council, at the opportunity of being consulted by Gunde and Director Kelly concerning the solar lights. Uh, we done a lot of research, only to discover we need to put this into the next budget item for next year. So at this present time, no action on the solar lights until the next. Know we can amend the budget, but right now, we have greater needs concerning our citizens, and Center Point has done a wonderful job to get the existing lights going. So no action.
Hey, agenda item number fourteen, discussion and possible action regarding a wheelchair ramp at Bostick Park, Miss Taylor?
Mr. Jones? Have y'all discussed anything about that at the EDC for a ramp?
As far as that ramp, Miss Taylor, and I know we, we looked at that uh park, um, and there's, it's, it's too compacted to try to get a ramp up in there. Plus that, from the road access to the park, um, and also that's the back alleyway as well, so as far as getting that ramp in. We need to restru- uh reconstruct the whole park itself, which we have went to and asked the EDC about, um, to finish up the project at Holers. Um. I can go into detail concerning Bostick Park and the renovations that it truly need, thank you, brother mayor, for sending Public Works to try to get it painted, to beautify it. But as far as that ramp, um, all the woman, Taylor, it needs one, but it's gonna be hard to fit one, unless we get. It was your plan, well, I'm giving you.
Cause I discussed it with you, to try to get one, like, now, and you said you would get back with me because y'all trying to remodel.
Yes, ma'am, it's been, it's been in the plan for four years. I went there with um, Ms. Vicky, I brought the concerns to council about the hazard areas of the park, not only that park, Lowland Bar Park as well. I brought those concerns to council over and over, please don't con- concern my passion, um, for getting upset. I'm just passionate about this, because the longer we delay, the the more our citizens hurt.
True, but the thing that I'm saying, I, we shouldn't have to close a park to try to, you know, like, upgrade it a little. That's what, that's what I'm not getting, like, you wanted to, when you said remodel, you wanted to shut the whole park down to remodel, correct?
If we're gonna remodel that park, we would have to, all the equipment, there is a hazard. The swings jagged edges and rusted, uh, the pavilion has concerns, all of it, if you really go and look, there's a hazard. There's a hazard, so you would have to close it down to get everything out to bring new equipment in, which I know we don't want to do. But in order to get it up to code, um, is what I shared before, there has to be some things in place to make that happen. You don't want construction going on and kids playing on swings.
I understand that.
Mr. Miss Taylor, where, where exactly had you envisioned?
I was thinking like, right, kinda right by the entrance, like, make a li- like a little, how that gate is right there, you can make that a little wider and just put one right there where the entrance is.
So why you need the gate?
Yeah, right there by the entrance.
That was in the plan for a new, new gate area.
Just to, you know, comfort some of the wheelchair handicap that's on that side, because it's not, I mean, it's not feasible for them right now.
I don't think that's that difficult.
That's what I was saying, like just to, right there by the entrance.
It's not that difficult.
Replace the covert, maybe?
Yes.
Right, and just do it right there. Just to, you know.
But it wouldn't be a ramp though, it just would be.
No, you can make it a ramp though and put the like drainage under the, like the under part of the ramp.
A concrete walkway all the way through the gate.
There don't have to be a ramp, it's just.
Just something like a concrete well wheelchair can get through basically, not like a total big ramp.
Now, at Longmont Park, we do need a ramp there because of the curve that goes all the way around.
And I submitted that to you at that time, and about the pole that's sticking up out of there.
You compared that?
I did, with the wires. Thank you.
Cut the tree down the other day?
Oh, yeah.
That one that's halfway deep.
Making me feel good, thank you.
Well, um, let's, let's try this. Let's go out for a bid for a concrete walkway that will go over that covert, if we don't have to replace that covert owning to the park.
Well, it needs to be replaced.
Sure.
It's gonna need to be replaced, it's, it's in bad condition.
That covert?
You said it's gonna need to be replaced?
It's gotta be wired, it's gotta be wired.
Water, okay, let's, let's just submit a bid to, to get it done. Um, to.
But also the fence.
Yeah.
It gotta be wired.
Wasn't it supposed to, uh, enclose more of that, that other property back there?
Ye- yes, it was supposed to extend to the, the other property, um, I think, little bit further out to the east.
So that, 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 uh, that fence, um, doesn't fit the guidelines for, okay.
The fence is missing some parts and we have had to, not we, but it's a concern.
Okay.
And again, I'm saying it to council, we definitely need to take notice of it.
Are we gonna, uh, vote on going out for bid, bids?
I'll make that request. Agenda seventeen. I'll make the request.
He's saying he'll put it on the request to future agenda items.
Future agenda, yeah.
Then that's no action, then we'll just move on. Agenda item number fifteen, discussion and possible action regarding paying invoice payments and reports.
Make a motion, we approve invoice payments and reports.
Second.
Mail report, Tom Green.
Mr. Stamps, your vote?
Four.
Miss Taylor?
Four.
Motion carries. Agenda item, um, sixteen, mayor's report update on hazard pay and convention center renovations. Um, as of today, everyone that was supposed to receive, uh, hazard pay that didn't get it before should have the checks already sent out to them. And as far as the convention center, we still hanging on with one bid so far. So I would like to see that one bid get to, just be the one.
I know personally there's another bid in there. Well, I apologize, what bid do you have, that might be the one we speaking of.
I mean, we, we advertised it and everything, we just don't have.
What, what's, what, who was the contractor?
David Woods. So, that's what's following this up, we only have that one so far, and it's been posted, what, probably three times, two times?
Where are the bids being submitted from or shared or submitted, or what groups are being notified?
They're posted in the paper and that's what we always get.
Maybe why you're only in one bid.
Uh?
And maybe why you're only in one bid.
Did y'all put it on the internet?
If there's, if there's contractor organizations or.
Well, okay, I'm sorry, it's.
It's on the website.
Website.
Well, at one point, and it was definitely ran a lot of times, twice, uh, in the past two weeks.
Okay.
And packages were placed at the front desk for anyone wanting to put in bids that could come in and see a package completed.
Excuse me?
How many employees missed out on hazard pay checks?
I can't tell you right offhand, but I know all of them has been taken care of.
Has there been any future requests for that to happen again?
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? Question? Let's move on to agenda item number seventeen. Mr. Green, I'll let you be first.
I'm going out for bids to place a concrete walkway into Bostick Park.
Second.
That is wheelchair accessible certified.
Um, who's second?
Green.
I mean.
Stamps?
Jones.
Jones?
I second you.
Okay, sorry about that.
I need to get with you on.
Uh, Mr. Stamps, your vote?
Four.
And Miss Taylor?
Four.
Mr. Green, anymore?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Jones?
Not at this time, brother mayor.
Mr. Stamps?
Yes, sir, approval of the bid for the convention center renovations.
Second.
That's all I have. Uh, Mr. Jones, your vote? Or Mr. Green?
Four.
And Miss Taylor?
I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion carries, um.
None at this time, sir.
States no. Um, agenda item number eighteen, council reports and community announcements.
Yes, sir, while boys soccer team are district champs once again, I think the fourth, fourth consecutive, fourth year, or four times repeat, whatever. Uh, they were playing on Thursday night at six P M in Brenham versus Hearn, the first round playoff game. They're playing, uh, Thursday night at six P M versus Hearn for the first round playoff, playoff game. In Brenham. At six P M.
Okay. Anymore? That's it? Then we'll move on to agenda number nineteen, adjourned.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Green?
Four.
And Miss Taylor?
Four.
Thank y'all, have a good, good afternoon, what's left there?